Okay, we're recording. It is four thirty-two and we're starting the policy committee meeting. So, usually Lynn's here, trustee Grissom's here, me, clerk, and then everybody else that wants to come. Thank you guys for coming because the policies we have, we want to make sure are in line with what we actually do and with what the law says that we're allowed or unable to do. So, the way this kind of works is we bring up the policy, we go through the language, and then whatever needs to be changed, bring it out and we'll change it. If you have thoughts, ideas, or things that should be put into the policy, bring it out and we can talk about it and get it into the policy, okay? All right, so it looks like we're going to... What are we doing first?
So, the agenda is to get together and speak a good little bit.
Okay.
So, do you want to start with the ones that we did last, the revision of the five?
Oh.
The survey results.
Oh, okay.
And then, if you want to say that for now, we'll go through that.
What, the survey results?
Mm-hmm.
No, we typically will do that. We updated the hazing, harassment, intimidation, bullying, and cyberbullying policy last week. And, no, two weeks ago. We've decided, because we kind of took the month of November and December off, not intentionally, it just happened that way. But we decided that we're going to start doing the policy weekly because there are so many that need to be updated and rock current and all of that. And so, if anybody can come at any point in time, please do so. And if you can't come on a weekly basis, totally get it. But we sent this out, we updated the language and aligned it more with statute and had input and made some changes so that it seemed more applicable to what we do. And then we send it out for parent feedback or parent-staff faculty feedback. And the results of the feedback are here. So, we've sent out the policy, the procedure, and then the board. So, I hate this.
If you go to the hundred percent, you can do seventy-five, and it's a lot easier to...
Oh, there we are. Okay. I just don't like the swirly thing and then the top of the move because it's frozen. It just drives me crazy. All right, so I love that there is something in place for those kids that have it happen to them or they have it themselves doing, okay? Did you read through these by chance?
Just a couple of them.
Okay. If you could kind of get to the habit of just previewing it and then like highlighting, these are points of concern. So, it just speeds the process up. In the definition, a third-party school district employee should also be included. But they're not third parties. I see where everyone, every other person who could be in the building would be covered, but teachers, front office, staff, libraries, librarians, anyone directly working for the school district should also be included in the definition, including administrative personnel. Okay, so let's bring the policy up because I'm not really sure what this person's talking about and what was that in? The procedure. Okay, so, where's that?
So, it should be the draft in the current policy.
Oh, got it, thank you. Third parties includes, but is not limited to coaches, school volunteers, parents, school visitors, service contractors, other engaged in district business such as employees of businesses, yada, yada, yada. District harassment, hazing. All right, well, let's bring back up the policy now. Our students or third parties are strictly prohibited. This includes options. Oh, okay. So, Dustin?
Mm-hmm.
Since your staff and your staff, correct? And I don't know your name.
I'm staff, Mary.
Hi, Mary.
Betty Heeter.
Okay, nice to meet you. So, this is a student policy with respect to hazing, harassment, intimidation, bullying, and cyberbullying. And what it does not address in this policy is any district employee at all. It addresses third parties. Do you feel that we need to include district staff as a third-party representative?
Making your definition of the third party where it says not limited to, gives us a little bit of limitation, a little bit of leeway to include kind of whatever you feel is even necessary whenever needed.
Okay.
And in that definition, it says district, like that's separate.
Right, but this, so it includes facilities, properties, buses, electronic technology or electronic communication equipment on?
That's more computer computers. Yeah, that's physical things.
Yeah, right.
I will say you do put limited to coaches and I assume that, we're assuming that that is district staff?
I would say staff rather than coaches, rather than specifically coaches, staff would cover.
Well, we do have coaches that are not district staff. They're either volunteer or?
Okay.
Street coaches is the new lingo that I've been hearing, so.
I guess just put staff in there.
Okay.
Then that would cover every base.
So, if we add staff, I mean?
Does that hurt anything?
I don't think it harms anything. The, I believe this policy is, I mean, because if staff is involved, that's more, I think, Title IX violations because this is specific to student, this chair as well. Student interactions and if students are being bullied by either other students or students on different campuses. But I don't know that it harms anything to add staff in there as an inclusive third party.
Oh, okay, so I see. This is, yes, so staff is covered under a different area.
Correct.
Then leave staff out. Because this is, these are people outside of?
School.
People directly employed by the district, am I right?
Well, the policy is regarding hazing, harassment, intimidation, bullying, and cyberbullying. So, and it's geared towards the student population. However, what this parent is pointing out is that, you know, there are, there is the potential from a perspective of a student or a family member that, you know, the biology teacher's bullying kiddo. So, I think that's why this parent just brought out the fact that you don't even include staff on this policy.
Because it's a separate policy.
It's a?
Well, it's a, there is Title IX.
Right.
But I, my other half of my brain's not here. But Title IX is more specific, I believe, to sexual allegations or sexual assault. That parameter. Because I'm not?
Whereas this is just bullying.
This is just bullying, harassment, hazing, which I can't imagine teachers hazing kiddos, but you know. Who knows?
They've done worse.
Don't say that.
Not here, not here.
Not here, not here. Other, other districts, I get it, okay. So, I don't think there's any harm in including it because if a student feels that staff is bullying them or intimidating them or whatever, then it would be inclusive in the third-party realm. Okay. Does anybody have any other comment on that?
I was just looking through to see like, where does it say third parties? So like, see if it made sense in a sentence somewhere? And in this part, it says, "Third parties whose behavior is found to be in violation of this policy shall be subject to appropriate sanctions as determined and imposed by the superintendent or board." Where does that still all make sense if it's staff then?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. What recourse do parents have to stop our children from being targeted by malicious attacks from the school staff? Okay, fire everyone from the principals to the superintendent. Well, I don't know that that's a solution, but fire everyone, okay. Do you know who this parent is by chance? Did they leave any more contact? Because I would like Lynn to follow up.
I can find out, but all of them are jurors, all of them. She just?
Bring to that one, sounds like.
Yeah, just make a, I would like her to be able to try and follow that up. Because obviously if someone's discontent, it will allow them to see what's going on. Addition of definitions is helpful since these terms can be misconstrued, but question additional of defacing property. This would occur outside of school and is the school responsible for disciplining behavior that occurs outside of school? This should be parents' role, limited inclusion of parents. I think it's defacing school property, not anybody's property. Okay, defacing though, that's straight from statute under the Title Thirty-three. So, we're not going to change that. Unless anybody has any input. And so, I think that concludes. Perfect, okay, so these can go to the board. All right, moving on to student interrogation and arrests. So. Wish there was an easier way. Anybody who knows parents, I'd say pop up, that would be great.
Can we first click on it and then?
Hold on, let's go here, so.
So, click onto which other one?
Like, why do you have to?
This seems to all be related to harassment.
And then just click on the blue and all just the text over.
I think that's all it's out here is harassment, unless that's different.
Oh, no, that was a file for remuneration.
Okay. So, we do have a current policy.
No, that would give the other one.
And so, you will understand, we typically will work off the draft because the draft has all combined language. It has our current policy language, any requested changes or modifications from ISBA. And then if we've discovered any changes that we want to make, those will be highlighted in red. So, student reviews, interrogation, and arrests.
How can you have four of three?
What, you'll have the draft portion, the draft copy is the combined one, but we always give the recommendation and like Lynn's. Oh, these are the wrong. Okay, thank you.
You have one more copy.
Yeah.
Thanks, thank you.
You of all people really need that.
Okay, so it looks like. Okay, so there's a little bit of change. So, we just started the first paragraph and read through it. When a violation of board policy or school rule occurs, the school principal or designee may question if a potential student victim or students who may have relevant information without prior consent of the parent, guardian, or legal custodian. Another adult should be present during the questioning of students. How often does this occur, do we know?
Do you consider parents?
Thirty percent of the time.
Thirty percent of the time?
Where, I would say another adult. If a kid violates their tardy policy, I don't have Hatcher or I don't ask Jenny to come in and talk. You know, let's interview the student, let's talk about what's going on, but if it's drugs.
Like, all of the attendance policies, I met with every one of our kids that hit six absences.
Okay.
And a hundred and ten violations per ten absences or more. I met with every one of those kids and not once I had another adult enroll with me.
Okay.
And I did meet with them so they knew that that's why the letter went out and this is what the policy is and that they may need to go up petition to bring the state of credit.
Okay, did you communicate with their parent though?
Yes.
Okay. So, that is, I mean, I think the, the big caveat here is when are we crossing the line of infringing on the parent's rights for their child in these types of situations? Because that's, that's the biggest concern, we want to make sure that we're not doing that.
So, could you give me an example of when you think that would take place? Where you think an administrator would question a student and violate their rights? Or violate the parent's rights, I guess?
It's the parent's rights, yeah. I don't know, that's, I, I, as a trustee, I get calls and concerns with parents that think that we're overstepping. So, that's something we don't want to be doing is overstepping. We want to make sure that all the right parties are following the law, following our rules and that, you know, if you've got an unruly child, well, you've got to be able to get ahold of the parent and if you can't, then what do we do? I mean, where do we go from there? So.
I will say anytime law, we do get law enforcement, anytime law enforcement talks, I've contacted the parent to let them know that they have the opportunity to be present before law enforcement has a conversation with their child.
Okay. Go ahead.
No, just to give you actually a screenshot from a slide from the post-academy.
Okay.
You can.
Perfect.
This is, I use that as a reference.
Do parents need to be present when interviewing? No. Don't let the parent answer for the child, I would agree with that. Okay, is, let me see here.
That's for the law enforcement side, of course.
Right.
Was that the state law you shared?
Oh, yeah.
It was.
So, it's a little slide, it can, it's just a screenshot from the post lateral training. It's all online. Oh, the post is police officer standards. So, they're the ones that run the police for the state. Yeah, sorry, we're talking. Interviewing juveniles, and there's just four bullet points. It says Miranda interviewing juveniles at school. And then, do parents need to be present when interviewing or interrogating a juvenile? Says no.
Right.
And don't let the parent answer for the child. So, this is what, how law enforcement officers receive this information through, say it's the district of law enforcement for each state's individual training practices.
Thank you.
But then there's like some case law from the Supreme Court as far as when Miranda needs to be read to a kid. It depends on like their, their age, their cognitive level, all of that stuff.
Okay.
So, I personally have not read Miranda to any kids that I've like talked to yet because it wasn't appropriate.
Okay.
Because it wasn't necessary according to the law.
Okay, but did you communicate with their parents?
Yes, it depends on the situation. So, it depends on like the severity of the crime. So, pretty much everything goes through like Josh or Ryan at Timberlake. They'll come to me with something, they'll have already contacted the parents.
Okay.
Parents know that I'm going to be talking to them. They're given the opportunity to be present if they like to, if they want to be. Most of the parents say, nope, talk to my kid, do whatever you need to do, blah, blah, blah. There's not a big pushback on that.
Okay.
In my experience.
Well, and I have no problem if we're contacting parents and parents are given the go-ahead. But are there situations where parents wouldn't be contacted and we would chat with our kiddos? I get the, okay.
Well, there's a lot of times where, I mean, things are going where the school safety issue, I mean, I got to use my bus jet and I can't wait around and get the approval from a parent because it's a safety issue. And I will tell you.
But if it's a safety issue, I would assume these guys are involved.
Yeah, Hatcher especially, yeah. Not so much Hudson until we identify it to certain levels, but Hatcher's involved. And I've had parents multiple times, you know, not, not all the time, out of a hundred conversations I have with kids, maybe two out of a hundred where the parents are like, I wish I would have been involved. I wish I would have been contacted beforehand.
Right.
And I, and I understand that side of it, but I just, in my shoes, realistically, me going through and picking and choosing, if I had to get ahold of a parent and had to give the, have their consent every time I had to interview someone about something even, even serious, it would be, it would make it very, very challenging to go through and question those. You know, to go through and I feel like just do my job.
Okay.
And that's just my opinion, I don't know if you're.
When you look at this, it even says that this one is for student victims or witnesses. So, you're just getting some background information so you know where to go with it, who else to talk to before you move into that interrogation piece that's next where it talks about who your student suspect is. Sometimes we, I call other kids down that might have been sitting nearby to find out what they heard. You know, and it's like, you're not in any trouble, I just know, wanted to know, did you hear something? Did you notice anything? And if they didn't hear or notice anything, they go back to class. Like, we don't mention other students' names or give them specifics, we're not beating them down the line.
I totally understand that.
But I'm not going to call a parent before I do that because we're just, oh, there might be something here, but there might not. And every time we do that to call a parent is mental. I mean, I just think it's, hey, it slows the process down, but it also, the parent, I don't know if it's necessary. Parent of kids going through high school, I wouldn't be in those scenarios.
Okay.
I totally get it and I agree with what they're saying. What's coming to us is the accusation probably from some seventeen-year-old female who's being interviewed by one male behind closed doors of some sort of inappropriate touching or you see where I'm going with that.
I do, I do, and that should never happen.
This verbiage saves you from, yes, it probably could get cleaned up and maybe we can tailor it to when administrators feel the need to or something along those lines. Because you're right, you don't need to do it for ninety-nine percent, especially tardiness and stuff like that. But this is what's going to save the district paying out millions of dollars later on when you have that kid that's being talked to by another male, by an adult male behind closed doors. And then you come out and they may make this whole thing up. And just a little frosting on the cake. A district in our state, other than this district, maybe an adjoining district, recently had an incident occur.
Right.
That's where this is coming from.
Right.
So, how we need to proceed and clean that up so it works for admin and it also works for the district.
Right.
That's why we're here.
Well, and it needs to also work for you guys.
Yeah, it's the same thing. I mean, we got cooler cameras and stuff, you know, that we, we can utilize, but that's still not the same as putting another responsible adult who's going to, you know, corroborate what occurred in that setting.
Right, right.
The final condition is that if the parent is your potential offender, or the kid.
Yeah, that's in here somewhere.
Right.
What did you ask? They would be calling.
The parents.
Yeah, there's exclusions to that, I know.
Well, in the sixteen sixty, is that it? No, it's not sixteen sixty. Sixteen thirty-one.
Yeah. Something in description, yeah. You guys know what something needs to be there or not.
Yeah, if it's an allegation against their parent, that's not a situation where you call the parent at all. And I get that, but that escalates it to a different level. And it's not necessarily that board policy's been violated or school rules, it's that you have a child in danger. So, I think that's. Covered under a different umbrella than this policy. Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Can I ask a clarifying question too? So, I'm here, in the very top section says interviews by school administrators and then two down from that it says interviews by law enforcement. So, they're, they're two separate things in here already, right?
Okay.
So, are we wondering if the administrators need to call parents first? That's what we're talking about, okay?
There is that verbiage in here at the end of that paragraph. That effort is made to contact the parents, the guardians, unless safety issues are involved. And so, that kind of covers some of the previous conversation.
Okay. So, what if we just strike this? Because I heard the may suggestion, but if we stay, it's best practice to have another adult present during questioning of any student, then that means somebody used their judgment if they chose not to. And then if there's a problem, there's a liability. So, I mean, everybody is very clear. You know, it's best practice to do it. And if you feel like you can't, then that's a choice you're making.
Which I'm sure you'll document.
Right, but.
You know, that's, that's the reason why that choice was not taken care of.
Sure, I like it.
Okay, okay. So, in situations where a student is suspected of violating board policy or school rule, the principal? Oh, student victim witnesses, okay. Student suspect. The principal or? I heard does it mean they interrogate? The suspect student, suspected student, without the prior consent of the student's parent, guardian, or legal custodian. The school official must first have reasonable grounds, however, to suspect that the student committed such a violation. That's so subjective. The nature and extent of the questioning must be reasonably related to the objectives of the questioning. If student denies any involvement or culpability, the student will be afforded the opportunity to present his or her side of the story orally or in writing. Okay. Thoughts, comments?
We had the same comment, you did. Interrogated is a little bit intense. When they use the word question down below, could you change that topic? It says designee may question the suspect rather than interrogate. It's consistent language through there and it's a little less aggressive.
Right. Okay, so what was this?
The principal or designee may question the suspect. They use the word question again later, so it might be used in the same language and a little less.
Even on the title of the student interviews, interrogation.
Yeah, questioned by, or questioning by school official or school administrators. Or say, keep it as interviews.
Interviews by school administrators, yeah.
Yeah, like the top one said interviews, because the second one still say interviews, you're just interviewing the suspect instead of?
The victim.
So, this would be student interviews or arrests, okay? So, the principal may. The school official must first have reasonable grounds to suspect that the student committed such a violation. What are reasonable grounds? I wanna know what you guys think are reasonable grounds.
Reasonable suspicion.
Okay, what does that mean?
That means that more, uh, it is highly likely that they committed such violation.
Based on what?
Based on, um, a witness.
Okay, so there's some evidence to support.
You have to have some evidence.
Baby detectors go off when they're in bathrooms.
Okay.
You smell marijuana on somebody. Videos.
Video.
Not just that they look suspicious and you think they did something, that's not, that's just.
Okay. Greg, do you have any input on that?
Yeah, uh, mostly the time, it's, um, information by other students trying to do the same job we're doing as by keeping the school safe.
Right.
Um, and obviously, um, reasonable suspicion is a lesser degree than probable cause.
Right.
Which is wonderful that the schools have that opportunity to act on reasonable suspicion. And so, yeah, the more likely happening not is what I say is probable cause, but take that a little bit less. Um, it's a valuable tool that principals have and, well, it's actually a relationship that staff developed with the students.
Right.
To feel comfortable to tell them, you know, has something on them, um, I smelt this. And we try to nurture that relationship and not be afraid of it. So, having said that, um, it's a huge asset. Um, to gaining information of the school's safety.
Okay.
And typically, that's where these, this information is used.
Okay.
Um, so they can start fact finding, um, and it's, it's, yeah, it really works out well.
It looks like there's a definition of it on page three of the policy.
Yeah, more general, it's more than generalized suspicion, mere hunch. It's number, page three in the middle, number three, definitions. Direct observations, experiences of others.
And I would add that same sentence to that second paragraph that we did on the first, because, I mean, you've got a suspect student in there, so.
Okay.
I would agree with that. That actually might be a better spot to use stronger language there.
Okay. So. So, if we were to make it stronger, how would we do that? What would we, what do we wanna say?
The original up there that was struck out.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, in the, within the definitions, it defines.
Alright, so another adult shall be present during questioning of any student suspect?
So, yeah, suspect student.
Okay. Is that possible for?
It's tricky at some campuses.
Okay.
That works for most high schools, even middle schools, but your elementary, that's not gonna be the key, it's gonna be trickier for them.
For whom?
An elementary.
Oh, a, elementary. Okay, but I know, not just knowing from, um, experience when we've had a few tricky situations. Principal always pulls in if not, um, someone within the office, somebody else on staff who's.
Okay.
Not currently with students.
Right.
Just so they do have a second person there.
Okay. So what I hear you saying is it's not overly tricky at elementary?
I wouldn't say so. I mean, you know, there's a lot of staff and, um, if the counselor's available or if somebody's off, I don't know.
Okay.
But who, who, who needs to be involved? Should it just be administration?
I, I, I just wanna clarify here where you wrote in there, Michelle, that another, uh, shall, adult shall. It was should and it's always been should, you know.
Yeah.
So we should change the shall to should anyway.
Uh, shall is a requirement.
It is.
Should is optional.
It is.
But I don't know.
I definitely, I definitely see her point to where things are chaotic in a, in a setting, in any of the buildings regardless. Um, and there's not somebody available, readily available for it, admin to grab and. Throw it in there and, and there's an urgency for something to be happening now.
Okay.
So, at least we would, we would be able to justify that to people questioning as to what we did. And why our policy says, at least it says should, and we had to make that decision to move that along.
Okay.
But in most cases, you know, that gives them the ability to, to do that, to dr- to grab Hatcher. Or the assistant principal or whoever and say, hey, I need you in here too.
Okay. Have you ever been at, uh, John Brown with admin for students?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, um, throughout the week.
I'm sorry.
I know. A lot of help and it typically takes a little bit of weight off of, you know.
Right.
There'll be four pairs of four kiddos and a fifth kid. Hey, can you talk to our little friend? Absolutely, let's go. Um, and I'm also covering seven campuses.
I know.
So I'm thinking about the should, um, and then I'm thinking about Mountain View.
Right.
Every adult in that building has. Can't just immediately pull away.
Well, there are limited adults at that building.
Yeah, and that's where I, maybe a shall, or, no, neither should. Because I was thinking some of the stresses that they handle, juggle a lot of things.
Great, great point.
Everybody's engaged.
Right, right.
And there's moments, and I totally trust the staff, they're everywhere around here to. Never seen, had any issue, I've never been nervous or had to address anybody for having a weird situation.
Okay.
In a, a room, so that's what we're, we're kind of getting at.
Right.
Um, having some second eyes on it, uh, you'd hear it from me if I thought anything sketchy.
Okay. Well, that's good to know.
Would adding the language of based on urgency of the situation, would that help clarify? Or just add more? And we need.
I thought something to do less is better.
Yeah.
Okay.
The only thing I would like to think about doing is potentially, if we're gonna change that back to another, if we just keep another adult should be present, then going back and.
Maybe this one.
Keeping that original statement, cause those two statements pretty much do mean, I think, very similar. I mean, in all reality, they mean the same thing. I think it'd just be nice to have common language in there. So that blue strike out.
Right. But the, the concern up here was that, um, it seemed more like that's what should be happening more than not, and it's not. So if we make it a best practice, then it's not necessarily, um, the required expectation. It's a selective choice. However, up here, we are dealing with student victims, which. I would say that there's more often than not, if they're a victim, there should be a second body in the room. Depending on the allegation with the victim. Witnesses, maybe not so much.
And I, I mean, yeah, a hundred percent.
But you two are, you know, you're up there.
If a kid comes in crying and she's, I mean, this happened probably a month and a half ago, and she's going about something that.
Yeah.
Happened to her, she's saying that happened to her.
Right.
And she's rolling, I mean, she's going.
Right.
I don't wanna break that up and say, whoa, whoa, pause, 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 let me go get another adult.
Okay.
Because she's, I, you feel, I mean, you get the sense, she's comfortable, she's, she feels comfortable with you.
She feels safe, yes.
Now, as soon as anything gets dicey, I mean, then two days later, another kid comes in and you can see things are getting a bit test, testy or whatever. And the question's not going as smooth as what you think it was gonna be. It's, it's a timeout, let's go get someone else involved.
Okay.
And I'll go grab Hatcher, I'll go grab Ms. Ralph, Jamie, I'll go grab Shannon. So there is a little bit of like, we're using common sense in that office of like, when are we using that second apart? So that, whether it be more often than not or less often than not, when should we? I do think there needs to be a little bit of trust of the administration that's down there of like, let.
Well, and respectfully, I don't think this is about not trusting the administration. I think this is more about, uh, CYA for the district. It's a liability issue. And it's, it's not that I don't think that there's no trust in the administration at all. It's that when we open the door, people will walk through it. And we don't wanna open the door and we wanna make sure everybody's protected, especially the district. Because we don't wanna end up in a lawsuit because we either rushed or we didn't consider the parents' rights or we just, you know. And not that I think anybody goes forward with that mindset, but things happen and I don't want our district in a, a liability lawsuit. So, um, up here, I mean, the student victims, and I get what you're saying, and I wouldn't wanna stop. If you've got a, if you've got a female victim with a male receiving the story and that female victim feels safe and comfortable in discussing. No, you don't wanna stop the flow of the conversation, I get that. And I hear you're saying, well, I'm smart enough to know that if we're going down the wrong path, then we just stop and we get someone else involved. So, I just wanna make sure that the language promotes the fact of the common sense approach and.
So I feel like the language though, should I have stopped like right away when this girl started? Say, no, stop, let's, I need to go get someone else right away.
Right.
Like, is that what the language is telling, I mean, maybe I'm misunderstanding what it's saying.
Well, with the, another adult should be present, Shannon suggested turning the should to a may. Which kind of meant like, you know, it's completely optional. So, putting the best practice statement is just kind of a friendly reminder. That y'all shouldn't necessarily be having that second body there every time, understanding that there are situations, it's not gonna happen. But, again, it's just words, so what does everybody feel comfortable with? Or, if we can't come to an agreement, we just put it on the board and say, please decide.
Could we say ideally? It's like a little bit less than best practice?
Ideally, another adult, uh, should be present during questioning of any student.
I like it.
Okay. Just, you don't have to go with it. Okay. So, down here for student suspects, ultimately, you should always have the second person in there because this is a suspect. It's a little elevated as far as why they're there. Uh, when a suspected violation of criminal, criminal law has occurred on school grounds at a school-sponsored activity or an activity involving. School operations, law enforcement officers may be notified by school officials to request a criminal investigation. Law enforcement officers have also independently determined that an investigation requiring student interviews and interrogation is necessary. May also, okay. When law enforcement officers question a student, victim, witness, or suspect in any such instance, school officials shall make an effort. To notify the student's parents, guardian, or legal custodian in advance of the interview or interrogation unless safety issues are involved. Okay. When would we not call law enforcement? If there's been a suspected violation of criminal law? Can you guys think of an instance?
No victim, and contact the parents, the parents don't wanna be victims. Or so it's all kind of settled amongst them, so, um, there's a lot of crimes that happen.
Okay.
Um, but we say, oh, okay, I pushed so and so.
Right.
And admin calls the parents, you go, okay, we'll take care of it as parents or we'll work together with school. To do some sort of maybe admin discipline or something like that, and administratively.
Okay. Do y'all have thoughts or criminal laws in broken and you guys haven't called the police? Okay.
It's nice having somebody that's assigned to us that we can just call.
Right, right.
Yeah.
We're prepared to, even if there's a question of it or not. You know, Hatcher reaches out to, and they're in constant communication of whether or not it's a necessary, like, is this gonna be helpful? We don't care to where we're at, so.
Okay. Up at Timberlake, if you're involved and it's violated criminal law, I mean, you're already there.
Right.
Yeah, there's been plenty of instances where a crime may have been committed. But it's just all handled by the school, like fights in the bathroom or, you know, stuff like that.
Okay.
Like, I don't, I don't write a report on every single crime, like, first time offense of tobacco vaping.
Okay, alright.
Or even first time offense of anything minor.
Okay, cause vaping is a very big problem in our schools.
Right.
So. Alright, um, okay. When students are interviewed or interrogated by law enforcement officers, the principal or designated.
Do we need that? I mean, the police officers are going to observe their roles and standards. Do we need to make that statement like they wouldn't do it?
What do you mean?
Um, shall request that police officers observe all procedural safeguards prescribed by law. You're gonna do that? Do we need to have that language in there? Like, we have to put that out there to make sure that you do it?
I think the language is there because of the second sentence, which states, however, district personnel are not responsible for a police officer's compliance with the law. Um, so, I mean, uh, but I don't know that.
Are either of those statements really needed?
I think it is.
Legally, we need to say, yeah, well, we put it out there and we don't have to, it's not our responsibility if they don't.
But if, if you took out the, if nothing else was there except stating district personnel are not responsible for police officers. Um, you know, we're just saying, they're cops or the district over here. It's, it's, they're, they're two separate hats. Um, uh, it's just a disclaimer.
I was just asking if that disclaimer is really necessary, but.
Well, it does say shall. Right, right, and other than like, you know, if Dustin calls for police. Because of something that's going on, is the first thing out of his mouth, you know, please observe all procedural safeguards. I mean.
That's not gonna be the first thing out of his mouth.
Right. Refuses to place a police question, it is the law enforcement officer's responsibility to be responsible appropriate. Okay, so I think we could technically.
Get rid of all that.
Get rid of that.
The thing, before you do.
Oh, look, I can do this.
This policy came from the admin, admin policy out of Boise or whatever, which multiple school districts use around the state. So, I'm all for removing it too, but it's in there for a reason and I don't know what the case history of that is.
Well, here's the deal. This has been in our policy since two thousand and seven. It was never been reviewed since two thousand and seven. So the law has made changes, improvements, tweaks, whatever, in the last, don't quote my math skills.
Right, but I, I think even recently though, if you went to the state's, um, you know, um, policies. On government stuff, that still, verbiage is still in there as of recent. Uh, it doesn't make sense to me.
What do you mean?
It still says that. It still says that that is in there for school districts that are looking to adopt policies, and they're using this as a model. That verbiage is still in there.
Like ISBA.
That's, that's it, that's it.
We have a copy of ISBA, one of these three came from ISBA, and that paragraph is in all three of these, our previous one, our draft one and the ISBA one.
And it doesn't, yeah, and I, I don't know why that's in there.
Why it's in there is because these were written by lawyers. Um they do reference, I'm just gonna do this because it's a me thing.
Statute told.
Right, um.
And then my next question would be, is, does it hurt if it's in there, do we, do we foresee some sort of by years later?
What liability for them if they don't say that to him?
You'd have to change the shall at least.
Yeah.
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 Okay, I think that statement has to do with this statute. And that's just me skipping it. So it is a disclaimer statement, but my bigger concern, I guess, is that it's saying that they shall request.
They have to do it, you know.
Yeah, and if they're not doing it, that's a problem, and I don't wanna make more work for everybody else. But the fact that this particular statute just basically says, you know, while the government entities and its employees are doing its job, they're not gonna be liable for other agencies and what they're doing. I think the very, that, just the statement, district personnel are not responsible for a police officer's compliance with the law. If a parent or student refuses to consent to police questioning, it's the law enforcement officer's responsibility to respond appropriately to such refusal.
Done, perfect.
Yes, sir.
However.
Go for it.
There are bad cops out there.
I understand that.
And if we blatantly see admin or anybody, us, armed guard, or whoever, you know, we get a new officer to the area, blah, 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 you know, and they do something inappropriately that is not in compliance with, with whether it be statute, human rights, civil violations, or any of that stuff, where we act, if we just ignore it, we're, we're in it anyway.
Do you feel this is telling you to ignore it, because I would think you would have an ethical responsibility to report it?
Well, what I'm saying is, is with the verbiage in there.
Right.
It's saying, you know, maybe, maybe that's why it's in there, it's like if you see something that's so gross, grossly negligent, you have a duty to stand up and say something about it.
Okay, but can you help me understand where you're hearing that in that sentence? Because it's just, what I hear is when students are interviewed and interrogated by law enforcement officer, the principal or designee shall request the police officer observe all procedural safeguards prescribed by law, okay? To me, that's just saying, we're putting an extra burden on people, and if they don't do it, then we've opened a door. It's not saying that our people have an ethical obligation to report something, which I would believe that all of you have an ethical obligation if you see someone, you know, going cuckoo, you know, in their job asserting more authority than they're entitled to or allowed to, I would think you would all report it, but.
Yeah, yeah, I know, we all would, but I'm talking about somebody that we don't know that could be coming to our area.
Okay, so if we don't. Okay, so say there's a new police officer that comes because we have to call, and they come, and it's not Greg, so it's somebody new. And they're like, woo, I would think everyone's gonna be all over that and let you know.
I agree.
If not, right through PD. But are you thinking that wouldn't, is there a case that you would think that wouldn't happen? I'm just curious, 'cause I'm.
No.
I have a thought. Would it feel better if it said something like, the district expects that police officers observe all procedural safeguards prescribed by law?
I like that.
I think that's common knowledge too, I.
Yeah.
I think it's common. And I'm gonna tell you, if I, if I break a policy because someone's doing something unethical, that's, I think, there's gotta be some trust from our staff to trust the board to hear the story, you know, hear it, and do what's ethically right. You know, even if we do break a policy, but it is for what was right in that specific situation.
Well, this is though specific to law enforcement, and what Mike's talking about is, you know, when we've got someone new law enforcement that, you know, comes to the scene, and they're like, you know, from some horrid state that takes liberties and does things they shouldn't do, and they do that here, you know, are we just gonna stand by and watch it happen and not say anything? I don't think so.
You have to trust the training that they go through in order to be a police officer in the state.
Right. Well, and I couldn't imagine, but like Mike said, there, there are, there are bad cops. They're bad people.
There are.
And people that we all make mistakes.
We do, we do.
So, yeah, I, I'm, I'm, like I said, I'm just trying to.
Confused why it's even in there, because our entire job every day is that responsibility. Why would it carry over into the school to have to add it in a policy?
These were written by lawyers. And. Yeah. Yeah.
I think this is the district's way out if something were to go bad with law enforcement.
That's what I'm reading into it, but I don't, I mean, and I don't, I don't like the shall request, because that's a requirement, and there's no guarantee anybody's doing that.
Yeah, we'll have to wait until they're requested.
Right, right, so.
Yeah, I don't think, uh, we've never requested Greg to make sure he follows the procedures.
Procedural safeguards.
Greg, make sure you follow those procedures, you know.
Yeah.
Been there for a while, I'm not.
No, 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 we've found all sorts of fun stuff in these classes. Well, and they're written down south, so they don't necessarily meet the climate that's up here, because they're, they're written from down south, so. Yeah, we found some interesting language and stuff that it just doesn't make sense for how we are as a district. Um, okay, so are we good with this paragraph? Mike, okay. Um, school discipline investigations conducted by school administrators and criminal investigations conducted by law enforcement officers shall be conducted in a parallel manner rather than as a joint investigation, therefore, a school discipline investigation may not stop as soon as a school administrator believes that a crime has been committed. The result, results of the parallel investigation may be shared among school officials and the police. That's interesting.
And what we do when we have kids that get caught vaping, and figure out that it's THC and not nicotine, we continue to do what we would normally do and deal with our school and things after, and we contact Hudson. He's on his way in, he's gonna deal with the criminal side, but we continue to go about our school side of things, it's not like, oh, stop. We have to wait for the police to come in, you know, there's parts of those that we can continue to perform with.
Right.
As we're waiting for the law enforcement to come on the scene. So I think that's what I was talking about.
That's what it sounds like to me, it's, you're gonna continue following your discipline po- policy. Even if, even if they, yeah, and they're gonna do their end, and it may just be an investigation kind of thing, you're gonna make sure.
Depends on severity, if that's a rape or something.
Oh.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, right, that's.
That's beyond a school.
Well, that would, I don't think that would be a school discipline.
Right, there's no school discipline for that.
Right, okay. Okay, so the results of the parallel investigation may be shared among school officials and the police. That I need to have questioned, answered by administration, because we've run into situations where we won't release information without the subpoena. And so I know it says may, but I'd like to know when we will and when we won't, because I think there needs to be clarity on that.
Well, I think so, it's gonna come from the criminal side too, like when you talk about, when you mentioned the rape, there's parts of those things that were done. And we're not gonna have information or share information, because it's no longer in our hands.
Right, but I'm trying to remember, 'cause something just came up recently where I think police. Police wanted um our video off of a bus, and we could not release it to them without a subpoena. Due to. What's that?
I did, okay.
What was that?
It was me.
Oh. Okay, no.
Asking for the video.
No, was it, but were you doing it from a police officer's side or from a school resource officer's side?
Well, both, because the, the crime occurred on the bus.
Right.
In the county jurisdiction.
Okay.
And so I got to see the video, but then when I wanted to get a copy of it, then I was told that it had to be subpoenaed.
Right.
And then we, we did, uh, just last week had a meeting with, with Lisa.
Okay.
About it.
Okay.
And her, what her, her story was, is that the, the school board is just fine with releasing the video, but they want a paper trail for it. And that's what was kind of related to me, from her.
Okay.
And their concern was just making sure that there's a paper trail showing where the video is going and why not just releasing it willy-nilly, so.
Right, yeah, no, we don't ever wanna just release something willy-nilly.
Yeah.
I was told that it's just standard procedure, and I asked where that procedure was, because I, I've been told that we just don't release anything without the subpoena, so we need clarification on that.
And is there a policy on that?
I don't know, we have a whole bunch, and then we have some that we just don't have that we need.
Yeah.
Um, so that is a good question, because that's where I was going with, with the policy on this, and I was told it's, it's standard procedure, so where that standard procedure lies, I'm not positive.
Okay.
But that needs to be clarified, because if there's parallel investigations and we may be sharing, well, we need clarification on when we will and when we won't.
Right.
Because that's too gray, either we share or we don't share, and if we don't share, I think we need boundaries as to why we're not sharing. And is it reciprocal, because I, I don't know with, in the police departments, 'cause we just had an incident, but um where we wanted a video, and they're like, nope, you have to subpoena it. So it's that, I, I think we need clarification on that, as a district, what we're gonna do and what ground we're gonna stand on. So, you could make a note, we have to ask Lynn about that.
And it's also saying the results, not necessarily the evidence, you know, so did this person actually get charged with this? So the results of the investigation, isn't that what it's saying?
It does.
It does say the results, but.
You wanna know what the.
Yeah, 'cause with, you conclude, I mean, your results are concluded based off of evidence.
Oh, for sure.
So what about the evidence, I mean, I would think that's part of the result, I mean, I, I don't know, it's, to me, it's too it's too vague and can be misinterpreted, and used one way or the other, and I don't like that. So we'll just get clarification, 'cause, you know, I think it would be best to get it cleaned up and everybody know, so. And are results sufficient for police force, I mean, like if we just, if we conclude the result being, if we think they were vaping, how does that even help police? If we don't share the evidence why we think that they were vaping.
Right.
You know, it's. Take a picture of it and use the proof, and the evidence, I mean, that's.
It's, yeah, the results are, the evidence is, is within the results, so that's where I'm thinking we need some clarification. Interviews and interrogation by law enforcement officers, non-school-related violation. Why would we even be weighing in on that? The district strives to maintain cooperative working relations between law enforcement, child protective, and school.
Well, I believe there was an instance recently where this, oh, would have come up.
Okay.
I don't know all about it, but it was at the middle school, right? Where the kid got arrested.
Did you remember there are video?
We are being recorded.
Does it remember we record these?
Oh, okay.
More than that, interviews students regarding their knowledge of suspected criminal activity and may wish to interrogate students who are themselves suspected of engaging criminal activity. Okay, except when law enforcement officers have a warrant or other court order, or women in emergency, or other extended circumstances exist, such interviews and interrogations are discouraged, well, that's a good thing, uh, during the student's class time. What? Okay.
So this is for non-school-related violations though?
So a crime occurred not in the school or on school property or school function.
Okay.
Wow. Right?
Yes.
Yeah, was that what they mentioned, like they, you know, these kids were there to, some of them to, uh, school was the easiest place to.
The area administrator?
Yeah.
Okay, so this paragraph is specific to. I get what you're saying.
Outside events.
Right.
Which I would think that law enforcement would not involve the school if it was at all necessary, I mean.
Sure, at times, that's the only place you can actually locate.
That you can make the contact.
Yeah, and I don't wanna be quoted here, it's been a few years since I. We have to confirm, and maybe you can confirm, um, you don't need a warrant, um, other court orders to walk in while we're investigating a crime, even if it happened off campus. Um, for example, um, a crime happens in the county over the weekend, and the investigator says, hey, is this kid here available for an interview or what have you? Don't quote me, I did triple check, or we can, I'll look this up. State law for Idaho says, we have to, I say, we, as a school, um, must allow access for that officer to do their, deputy to do their investigation.
I would think so.
So it says without, except for warrant, you know, uh, exigent circumstances. Don't believe that's necessary.
Can I ask maybe a dumb question? 'Cause I watch a lot of Dateline. On Dateline, whenever the police are gonna talk to a minor, they always, like, the parent always has to be there, is that not real life?
Not real.
Not real life.
Idaho law does not require as a law enforcement officer to even tell a parent that I'm gonna talk to their kid.
So some states do, but not Idaho.
Maybe.
Okay, maybe that's Kentucky.
That's frustrating part for some parents, saying, you're not gonna talk to my child unless I'm standing there, that's not the case. And obviously, I try to work with parents, but, and there's patrol officers staying in a park in the middle of the night. You know, the officers are gonna see what's going on. Yeah, it's frustrations, but at the same time, we're trying to investigate potential crime.
Right.
And, so.
What happens if the kid says something incriminating, and they, I mean, and they didn't, I don't, again, too much Dateline, I'm sure, but like, they didn't get a Miranda, right? It just.
So there's, that's pretty, that's a huge topic, and there's conditions with Miranda, um, that, just to break it down for Miranda, there's two conditions that must exist. Um, interrogatory questions or self-incriminating questions, also in custody. So there's, what we have is any um, um, investigatory detention. So there's, what we have, um, is any, um, investigatory detention. So we're fact-finding right now, and so you're not free to leave, but we wanna, we we don't have, but we're still figuring out. And once we have some information that like, yeah, this is gonna go towards a probable cause or if not had probable cause from what we call like a res just, a spontaneous utterance.
Mm-hmm.
Um, yeah, let's, um, read Miranda, play it safe, of course.
Gotcha.
Um, so, yeah, that's a huge, that's a whole topic in college.
I'm sure.
There's a lot of layers to that.
Yeah. Thank you. So, if we took out the exception, um, because basically, we're we're saying that we're gonna do everything, I mean, we don't really want it to occur during school time or in the middle of class. However, we're gonna work together to make sure that it can happen in the most, uh, accommodating way possible for student and officer. I believe that's what we're trying to say.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that one's in the sentence, it says, the principal and principals doesn't need, have the right obligations to take the reasonable steps to prevent disruption. That sentence covers that, like, we're gonna do what we can to keep them in class, but we're also going to work with law enforcement.
Right.
And that sentence there to me says it all.
Yeah, so that except sentence, I think, needs to be removed, is kind of a.
To move right after walking with a warrant, we're not gonna say no.
Right. The next class.
Sorry, we gotta finish math class first.
Well, I'm, well.
It's something I probably, if we wanna talk to a kid, you know, in Hatcher and Schultz know, what class are they, I don't wanna interrupt the court classes.
Right.
It's like home base or, um, PE or something, that's a good, good time.
Okay.
Always ask them, yeah, if it's not exigent.
Okay. But I would think if you have a warrant for that conversation, you're not gonna really care.
Yeah.
I mean, I I I appreciate the respectfulness of not wanting to be super disruptive, but I also understand, you know, if you've got that paper.
Yeah, that's kind of a.
That's what it is.
This is gonna happen now.
Yeah, exactly.
We're in time, we're headed to jail.
Yeah.
It's pretty weird.
I mean, the student might wanna stay in class, but.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Um, okay, so before any student interview or interrogation begins regarding suspected criminal activity, the principal. shall ascertain that the law enforcement officer has proper identification, evidencing affiliations with an identified law enforcement agency. Do we do that?
That could be for larger schools and larger districts.
Yeah.
Jim, when they came in the other day with the new diversion guide that I didn't recognize, and it's the first thing I did, walked up to him and looked his ID and made sure he was who it was, yeah, and then Hudson was right there, you have that in you? So.
Okay.
They usually display it correctly and it's easy just to look and make sure.
But, okay. But the thing is, is if, if it's Greg going to do it, is anybody gonna check his credentials? When you're saying you're going to.
I wanna say this is safe to have in here, um, because there's outside agencies, remote agencies that might travel in to interview something, maybe that's over in Washington. And they they live both, and so that's probably a safe thing to have.
Okay. It just says ascertain. Right, and if you guys know him, then it's been ascertained, I would assume, right? I don't know.
Proper identification, yes, I can identify.
Admin, detectives, plainclothes.
Yeah, no, come.
But I mean, for, to your point, like, we know these people, but if we don't know them, then it shall happen.
Deputy Wheeler comes to the campus, I'm not gonna ask for his share of site.
Right.
But there's, it's a safe thing to have in there, in my opinion.
Okay. Principal Andrew. I do feel like you're gonna get a lot of comments from parents who are like, why aren't you making sure they're following the law? I'm not saying that those are warranted, but. No, I know. Just be aware. Oh, yeah, I'm sure. Cause they they wanna have had this conversation. And if all the parents want it, then we keep it in. An effort shall be made, uh, to notify the student's parent, guardian, or legal custodian in advance of interview or interrogation regarding suspected criminal activity unless safety issues are involved. In cases involving investigation of reported child abuse of a student or a suspected perpetrator as a member of the student's family, such parent regarding contact would not be warranted, the Idaho Department of Health and Welfare, law enforcement, they exclude school personnel from any child abuse investigation interview and may use a school building to conduct the interview. Okie doke. Did anybody have a problem with me taking that sentence out? I'm just, I I get to playing with the keyboard, you know? All right. A law enforcement officer may take a student into custody if the student has been placed under arrest or if the student's parent, guardian, or legal custodian custodian and the student consent to such release. The officer must first notify the principal, or the parent designated, so that the student may be summoned to the principal's office and taken into custody in a manner that is inconspicuous as possible. Okay. And minimize disruption of school operations in the educational process. In the emergency situation arises and the student is taken into custody or arrested, on school premises without prior notification to the principal or designated law enforcement should notify school authorities to the situation as soon as possible. I'm sure y'all do that? Okay.
At the, in the first sentence about if the student's parent guardian has given consent, I don't have to have consent to arrest a kid from, us, from anywhere.
Okay.
It's weird.
Or, that's an or.
It says or, if the student's parent, guardian, or legal custodian and the student consent to such release.
Or.
So you're taking them, cause you're arresting them.
It's what release, though, is it?
Parents.
It's odd.
You can do that? So I could call you up and say, hey, will you take my kids?
Just cuz you want me to take them, doesn't mean I can't.
Okay.
That's nonsense.
So it sounds like if, like, a kiddo's done something and the parent's like, just tallented juvie for the scare tactic?
That's not how that works.
Okay. Oh, cuz I don't know what the second half of that sentence is for.
I don't either.
Does it just mean like if you wanna take them to the, the, for questioning somewhere else off school property? Does that happen? But it's, it directly references under arrest. I know.
Would you ever take a kid that's not under arrest off school grounds? For their own safety or for something where?
Yes.
I could see, I could see.
I, I put a kid on a PC hold and took him to the hospital.
Mm-hmm.
But you, in that case, you would have wanted to have a parent consent on that piece.
Correct. I don't, I, I don't have to, if I can't get a hold of the parent, I can put a kid under a, on a PC, an involuntary hold if they're suicidal or whatever, without the parent's consent, but I'd rather have it.
Yeah.
And the, or have the parent respond and take the student themselves, that's the preferred way.
And so that, we're not mixing verbiage of this.
And they're not under, and they're not under arrest, it's not probable arrest, you know, it's just.
Are they considered in custody?
They are.
Right, they're in custody, so that's where that, so that part, they're taking them into custody while they transport them, but they're not arrested, so there's that war piece, they're in custody for that.
They're in custody for. Protective.
I understand, same situation.
Yeah.
We involved law enforcement and they transported them to K V H.
Yeah.
And it was, it was a necessary thing and at that time, they tried to get all the tenants, but couldn't.
Yeah.
But that's what needed to happen and the police had to get involved.
Well, and mine was tricky because mom was also the suspect in the child abuse and then dad lived in Boise.
Yeah.
And so, had to do it.
Yeah.
Right?
It's almost two different topics.
It's two.
It is, yeah.
As if we're in a cite and release.
Yeah.
Technically, it's an arrest and then cite and release, same, but you're just promising to appear later, so it might be one sentence combining two.
Two different sentences, yeah. Yeah. Let's read the next first sentence.
What if we wrote a different sentence for that, is, um, the student may be released to the custody of the parents?
And I've done that a lot of times.
So rather, because this, because the consent to such release is very vague, it's like consent to release what?
Yeah.
Right.
But when you, if, if you've done that, are you citing the releasing? Yeah, well, and so, most crimes have to be put forward through like a. Right. A juvenile, um, summons, like, it's not a ticket, it's, you know, and MOPA. They all, yeah, I've only made one juvenile arrest.
Mm-hmm.
The rest were all by summons and released to their parents, so. It all, it all depends on the severity of the crime.
Yeah.
Okay, so how would we want to reword that second, that second half of that sentence, so that people understand what's being said?
Do we need to have it at all?
I don't think so.
I don't know.
I, I, I like less. Because if the parent tells the cop, does that have anything to do with the school? And what they work on their.
At that point, it's their.
If the piece.
School policy. That first sentence, I would change, uh, the law enforcement officer may take a student into custody if the law enforcement officer has probable cause to place them under arrest.
Well, we don't even need that part, though, because again, that goes back to our earlier discussion, that you guys know who he is and your.
Yeah.
Effect and arrest and.
Right.
Hey, yeah.
I think, isn't the gist of this really just saying that a student could be arrested on school property?
Yeah, cause you guys have the right to arrest a student on campus.
Yeah, that's really what it seems to be saying.
Yes, you could do that.
You have the right to do that, I think. So if you're going to place a student under arrest.
Could you then release them to their parents?
Huh?
Is that what it's trying to say, is that we place them under arrest and we release them to parents?
I, no, I don't take it as that.
I don't either.
So I was trying to understand that one sentence, so even on a cite and release, there's an arrest at that little moment, they're actually, they were, you're doing basically a promise to appear in lieu of going to cust- into custody down in the jail. That's the only way I can kinda decipher.
Okay, so that's what you're thinking it's talking about, is releasing to parent instead of arresting?
After arrest, but we don't cite and release juveniles. You do the.
Does it count?
Process, we file the complaint, so to speak. Yeah. It's a juvenile complaint, petition. The only thing that we cite them for would be like, um, like traffic violations, tobacco, and those are not, like, anything that's like a legitimate crime is done through summons, so.
Okay. I think they were trying to go for, I don't know what he was talking about, like, taking them to a hospital or something like that, cuz the next paragraph says, when a student is removed from a school by law enforcement officers for any reason. So it seems like there, even though this headline on this one is arrests, it seems like it's also discussing.
Remote, just removal.
Removal, right.
You can cite and release them at the school, even if they're parent. It was not hurt.
That makes sense now.
Okay, so if we change it to arrests.
Or.
Arrest and removal of student.
Or removal.
Yeah.
You think custody can cover arrest or and PC?
What?
And or.
And or.
So what do you do then, is it custody or PC?
Custody can cover arrests.
Is custody tied with side people?
Try to make sense of it.
Now, it makes sense, yeah.
It makes sense to leave that sentence in?
Yeah.
Okay, in its entirety?
Yeah.
Can you ever take?
Does it?
Uh.
In its entirety, I don't think so.
All, I think all I need to say is, is a law enforcement officer may take a student into custody.
Custody.
And then list out.
Period. Because the other, the other sentences pretty much explain what those situations would be. And that parents will be, you know, every effort will be made to notify parents and school. Okay, so, a law enforcement officer may take a student into custody. Therefore, the officer must first notify the principal or designate for the student to be summoned to the principal's office.
Unless, or said I have probable cause to arrest.
Inconspicuous manner minimizing disruption of the school operations in the educational process.
What I would normally just.
When an emergency situation arises and the student is taken into custody or arrested on school process without prior notification to the principal or designated, the law enforcement officer should notify school authorities of the situation as soon as possible.
Summon to the principal's office, should we open that to administration suite or some, or, we all know what it means, but sometimes it could be a.
Okay, summon to, how, just summon to the office?
Administration op- administrator's office or something, you know, principals are off campus most of the day on Wednesdays.
Okay. So if they're just summoned to the office, cuz I think each school only has one office that where.
Admins.
Yeah, exactly.
Situation, whatever scenario is, and like, hey.
Between the custody, you tell them to.
Okay.
Well, if I'm gonna, I'm gonna involve health, or, or be sheltered.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, in a health and welfare situation, in a K V H situation, is that a possibility or you can see this?
Main office?
Unstable, or they're in a situation of going.
It could be my office, it could be Brown's office.
The other parent is right.
Or other designated location.
And they don't.
We're all right there, I just.
Those walls is coming over to.
I have a site and release administrative office.
Yeah. Crazy uncle busts, might be showing up at my house.
I do feel like.
An administrator's office. I like that one.
Except you guys aren't administrators, are you?
I don't know what the situation would.
No, but if he says he needs a kid, I'll take him to Harrison or.
Okay.
Child, I want him to take my.
The buildings.
Whether they do it or not, it's nice, but I will say, we need to set it in here for administration and know that they're able to do that. Because if you have police come in saying, hey, we need to take Billy over here, recall the police.
Hello.
She's gonna look somewhere to see, what, can we look in? Is that even part of our policy?
Trying to think of each campus layout.
We're not kinda getting.
This campus is this campus, what they're best suit.
I think the cop should be able to take them for whatever reason. For whatever is gonna hit the parents. They decide, and we should naturally.
When a student is returned to law enforcement officers for.
Now I'm thinking of having them in custody, exactly.
School official.
Absolutely.
There's just that new angle there.
For removing the student from school, the police shall sign a release form in which they assume full responsibility for the student. If a school official has a reason to believe that a student was removed from the school by a law enforcement officer without making it bound to arrest or without the consent of the student and the parent or legal custodian, whatever, the school official will attempt to immediately contact the area administrator or legal counsel. Okay. We need to talk. Alright, so.
You have to do that to make your.
Do.
Can you do me a favor in school, that was that paragraph, I just wanna see, did you strike that sentence?
Which sentence? The release sentence, I did. Do we need to put it back in?
I don't know.
Well, no, because that, if that was the parent, the parent has requested that covered, law enforcement, they put it in custody, period, or whatever reason.
Yeah. Yeah, we were just having a full discussion on custody, I think we hung up sometimes thinking arrest and custody is criminal, it could be protective custody. Yeah, we were just having a full discussion on custody, I think we hung up sometimes thinking arrest and custody is criminal, it could be protective custody.
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't have to mean like they're going in to take them to jail, they could be taken in protective custody.
Right.
And that looks different and that, so just create a conversation that says if we take it out, are we handcuffing ourselves? I think either way custody is custody, it could be protective custody, it could be criminal like.
Right, it could be the rest.
For school policy, custody covers arresting.
Yeah.
Like it's a little, yeah.
Everything in our hands, our care.
That that's I just think maybe that four now covers that.
Could that be clarified within definitions of custody and say it could be um custodial or criminal?
Dave, you want to start?
Okay, so just in reading the paragraph as it's written. We can come circle back to the whole uh second portion of that sentence. So a law enforcement officer may take a student into custody. The officer must first notify the principal or his or a designate for the student to be summoned to an administrator's office and then taken into custody in an inconspicuous manner. Minimizing disruption of school operation and the educational process. When an emergency situation arises and the student is taken into custody or arrested on school premises without prior notification of the principal or designate. The law enforcement officer should notify school authorities of the situation as soon as possible. Okay, so the whole segment about if the student has been or if the student, parent, guardian or legal custodian and the student consent to release.
I I think we're good, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't taking something out that was actually, oh, now we're tied and we're like it's a custody thing or it's a domestic violence and now we want to be protective custody. That we handcuffed ourselves, I don't think we, yeah, I think you're good, so.
I think custody is.
I know, just choice of words.
Okay, then if we go down to the next one, it says when a student is removed from school by a law enforcement officer. By law enforcement officers for any reason, school officials will make every reasonable effort to notify the student's parent, guardian or legal custodian. But I don't think that uh so if they're taken into protective custody because of um alleged child abuse, the school's notifying the parent?
No, it's covered some further action in this policy though.
I feel like it already.
Under, yeah, under the investigation. But maybe some some wording needs to be added there.
From there.
Yeah, where's the paragraph, let's see here.
And if they and if faces involving investigation or for child.
Do you have that?
So it's in the bowl, I believe.
And that's something for before, it was two pieces coming, we'll talk about it.
Cases involving investigation. Involved in, well, if it's custodial, the parents are notified at some point, they're gonna want to know why the child didn't come home on the bus or walk in or isn't there.
Yep.
So the parents will be positive, but that's not, that's not.
That's not on us.
Law enforcement will.
Yeah, yeah. But it does say, oh, it says school officials, okay, just say parents will be notified, not necessarily by school officials.
So if we add. Mm-hmm, so if we add, because this bothers me that it's they will uh contact.
Right, no, that's good.
So just stating if it's regarding child abuse, that's not happening.
It's not saying that it's happening before that custodial.
So this was.
Yeah.
This was a newly added paragraph that I'm a little bothered by.
It's like yes, it would be done for, but it's not happening for a while.
Says before removing the student from school, the police shall sign a release form. Do y'all do that, police officers?
It's a negative.
Okay, um I don't even know that we have a release form for you all to sign.
Is there something that this is a situation where it's not an arrest?
Um, so they assume full responsibility of student.
There's a draft release form.
Okay, we haven't had one then before.
Right, no.
So um if a school official has reason to believe that a student was removed from the school by a law enforcement officer without making a valid arrest. Or without the consent of the student and the parents.
We should kind of do that.
So.
Stop making that an arrest.
No, I I don't, that doesn't seem right to me.
So we're back here on this lovely statement of of I guess release without saying release um. So this paragraph is saying y'all have to arrest the student or get consent from the parent and the student to remove the student. And if you don't do that.
Trying to think of a scenario that that would fall under.
I don't know.
Um courtesy of ride, it's always, yeah, please, I'm stuck in at work or whatever and the school needs to shut down, um yeah, it's consent. I can't think of a scenario.
Well, once we take them into custody, it's our responsibility, you know, it's it doesn't fall on the school.
He's talking about a non valid.
Yeah.
Take it a piece by.
Invalid arrest or making without making a valid arrest.
Right, and it's saying that if we suspect that there's, you know, some invalidity to what the police are doing, that we're gonna call the superintendent or legal counsel. But I guess I'm just trying to entertain a scenario where like. I guess then it goes back to Mike's bad cop situation.
Right.
I mean, I don't know, domestic violence where the dad's a police officer and is not supposed to have custody of the kiddo and asserts that authority because he's wearing a badge. I mean, that's that has happened, so I mean.
If he's making an invalid or without making a valid arrest, hold on, I I crooked at it, but I'm still gonna sign this little release form on my way out.
So does that release?
I'm just talking, yeah, I'm trying to read it.
Why?
Well, yeah, we don't, we've not had the form before, I don't think.
I feel like that is gonna do a lot more harm than.
Yeah.
What do you mean the form?
Well, if you're putting that in policy, it's one more thing, I mean, all these things, I'm trying to think like this is actually going on and we're actually going through a situation where a kid's getting arrested.
Oh, we missed the form.
We did, we did, we have taken into custody.
The chance of us remembering that form, I'm not seeing as unlikely, but it's gonna do more harm than potential good because we could actually forget this form and then there's. This mom, you know, parents, kids under arrest and they're gonna go through every little kind of research and try to find a way to get push to play on something else.
Okay.
So what post-ball school district wrote for this section? When law enforcement officers make a formal arrest for the student is otherwise in law enforcement custody, any and all responsibility for the student is transferred to law enforcement personnel and.
Perfect.
Okay.
Feel that, I like it.
And they don't have a form.
And there's no form.
No form, I forgot.
More to do, there's another piece of paper.
Yeah.
Wait a minute, what we can do is I gotta go find our school policy and figure out, I think there's a form, but I don't know where it's at.
Which policy was it?
Yeah.
He wrote the thing.
Which policy was it? What's your policy?
Uh um I don't know.
You may have to give me a number.
Well, their school district two seven three.
Thirty-five forty-five dash two.
That's ours, it's it's the same, it's the same one, yeah, matter of fact, it's.
Should be the same, I'm gonna say it's thirty-five forty-five dash two on theirs.
What does it say?
Thirty-five forty-five.
It says thirty-five forty-five dash two. There's one less zero than ours.
Yeah, this is their policies.
Their series has one less zero than we do, so. Does it have a title?
I don't know.
Student. This is under students.
Sure, I sure can.
This is this is ours.
Yeah, that's ours.
What is the title of it?
Remove the child.
Policy is five oh four dot five eight.
Oh, that's student interview procedure.
Yeah, but it's in there, it's the last paragraph.
Oh, look at their student interviews, that's awfully short.
That's perfect.
That's, even twenty twenty-one, it's not terribly old.
Yeah.
So it's the last paragraph is the policy.
So their procedures would be longer, they have a simple policy and then other weird procedures.
Right there, very last. Little section though is regarding without making a valid arrest.
No, that section is right here, arrest by law enforcement officers, that whole last section.
Okay.
And I don't know why they incorporated that into where they put it, but.
Uh, okay, so take this.
Thanks, Michelle, thanks guys.
Thank you.
Small paper.
Okay, so it's this portion. Okay. And. Do y'all document when you try to call parents?
Actually, I mean, the report.
In the report, yes, but school officials, do you guys document when you try to call parents with respect to police law enforcement involvement?
Yes.
Okay.
Do I document?
Some by call history.
Yeah, well, as I say, I'm better this year, I'm just.
Typically in my narrative.
Phone calls I've made, so I usually try to just.
At this time, I notified or administration notified.
Okay.
You know, that kind of stuff, but. I don't always do that, but I would say.
So every place that it says official, the school official.
Mm-hmm.
Can we change that to school administrator? Because any of us could be a school official.
Perfect.
Yep.
And you.
I want I want to put it on the administrator.
Could you put Brad's initials?
No.
That will designate a parent contact employee if red shocked.
Uh, before I leave, I wanted to talk about the student interview form.
Yep.
Um, I think that's. Should probably be reserved for like an outside agency coming in that doesn't deal with the kids every day. If at all.
Okay.
Because I I don't wanna have to fill this form out every time I need to talk to a kid.
Come on, could be fun, could be loads loads of fun, um.
Be a lot of paper, it'd be a lot, I have a lot of paper.
So what documentation do we have when you guys actually do uh either arrest or interview a kid? Is there any paperwork at the building level that you guys are giving them or that is occurring? I mean, I don't know, maybe it's just not occurring, I don't know. Because this is, you know, we have an interview form and we have an arrest form. Forms we've never had before and it doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to have them, this was a recommendation by ISBA. So which we are no longer affiliated with, but um. How do how do we know what y'all have done?
Do you guys do reports on every when you do interview the students, you know, if you're looking into a crime, you're looking into.
If I'm looking into a crime and I'm gonna talk to a student about a crime.
You do a report?
I'm hitting record.
Yes.
And recording that whole incident.
Okay.
If it's determined to be unfounded or whatever, I'm not writing anything about it.
You don't document that at all, could you do through dispatcher or cat?
I don't make a call for service on every single thing.
Okay, I was just looking to get out of that form there, so I'll go that.
Right. Yeah, if I'm if I'm gonna write a report, then everything's documented, but anytime I talk with a student, especially if it's alone, this is.
You guys only do daily activity logs or do you list your?
I started to do a daily activity log and then found out that I didn't have time to do an activity log because I was writing crime reports instead.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
What about you, Brooke?
We don't fill this out in the field.
Okay.
Is there a difference in the school setting?
Well, I think what this is for is in support of um. Police coming into the school building and assuming control over a student that the district retains control over.
Yeah.
Um, it's paper trail and it's a C Y.
Can I see the form?
I'm just thinking, that's our S R O's are trying to.
But.
Our situation is so different because they are employees at the district and a lot of those interviews they're doing are because we've asked for their, where this might be if they're coming in to do an interview that wasn't at our request, it's something they.
That's what I'm saying, an outside agency that comes in, maybe you can have this form for that specific purpose.
But if you came in not as the S R O but as the county sheriff, then you're an outside agency, so you're filling this form out. Because just because you're the S R O when you're not S R O-ing and you're sherifying. If you're sent to the school, even though you're the S R O, if you're sent there as the sheriff, then you would be the third party outside agency, you wouldn't be the S R O.
And that's.
You couldn't be viewed as that way, I guess would be the better way of saying that.
That's minimal information, I mean, that's not twenty seconds.
Mm-hmm.
Well, that's gonna be very seldom because that would probably like ninety percent of the time, I think when you're there doing interviews, it's because you're working as the S R O.
Right.
You're doing it because we've involved you as a school S R O officer. If you're coming to us to interview on your request, not ours, that doesn't happen very often. I mean, that's gonna be very few times that that form gets filled out.
Yeah, for us too.
But then.
I think about that, how like if you came to us and said, I need to interview this kiddo and it had nothing to do with school related. In a school year, that hardly ever happens and that might be the only time you never have to fill that form out, otherwise if it is, the post balls coming into our.
Right, and you could even help them out, Shannon, by you guys filling that out prior than you can get in there.
If we're coming, yeah.
Is this already done by the notification before you remove a child under arrest off the campus, is the principal?
I would think that's when it would be done if the police officer is.
Is it already done in that respect?
What do you mean? I didn't follow.
We already notified, placed an arrest, first notification is principal, principal has the child, you know, nicely brought over to admin.
Brought, right.
And there's the notification, okay, I know you're a police officer on my campus and I'm doing my notifications to however I document at the admin level as a principal.
Right, but by you signing this, having arrested the student, then that student is now your in your jurisdiction is no longer the obligation of the school district.
Right.
So that's the significance of the signature um and and badge number, it's I's dotted, T's crossed, basically. But I mean, I get what you're saying, if the principal's calling the student down, then there's already that trail that, you know, the student's coming for a law enforcement engagement um. Which would mean that these would then become the responsibility of administration to make sure that law enforcement is being, please, please fill this out, you know, or or.
Sign.
Yeah.
Or at least sign and put your badge number.
Yeah, I mean, it could be as simple as that, just.
I the arrest form, again, because that happens so seldom, would maybe make sense. If you're coming on to arrest, we might have some paperwork and we're gonna remember, that's a big deal, kids being arrested on campus.
Mm-hmm.
The the thought that there's like extra big work to do, yeah, that probably like what else do we need to do before we let them be arrested?
Right.
But when you're looking at just the student interview form, that one, I think we all agreed on with the other, like that may or may not. But when you're looking at just the student interview form, that one, I think we all agreed on, looked together, like, that may or may not occur because we interview so often unless it's an outside agency coming in.
Right, but like, say kiddo's stolen something from Super One, so, Super One's gonna call the police, but lunch is over, so the kiddo's back at school, so that officer's gonna come to the school and request that student to hold an interview. I mean, that would be when I would think this would be signed, because it would be the third-party outside agency coming in. Cause the police aren't gonna have just the school do the interview, if there's been a report of theft at Super One, the police are gonna come do their job, so.
The form is the same for the interview and the arrest form, if, if there, if this is being filled out frequent, frequently or infrequently, like Shannon says, the administrator could have that filled out and just have the signature and number of the badge number.
Right.
As well.
Right.
Would that, would that be included in the documentation of the event, like, under the, when you document and it's in the, and there's an arrest? Is that part of the documentation that would go under the student, or are you documenting it skyward?
Only if it has to have a school consequence. If there's no school consequence, then we don't put it in Skyward.
Right, it's a good policy. Shoplifting, now.
Shoplifting, I guess we're putting it in there, it happens during lunchtime, because now they're getting an off-campus, I mean, we're, we're addressing it because we're working with Super One, but on the actual legal side of things, if they, if they vandalized a car at lunchtime in the McDonald's parking lot, and you come over, you know, something like that, we don't necessarily have vandalism of property off-site in our Skyward. That's not, you know, so it would look different there, but we would, like, they're off-campus during lunchtime, and they may lose their off-campus lunch, but we just.
Yeah.
Like, but that's gonna be a whole different. I don't know.
But again, it seems like it's, it's really tying, it's adding another layer to what you need to do, and as officers, you have the right to go in there and, and say, I need to interview this student, I need to, um, take this student into custody, and to sign a release seems to be too much. They have the right to do that, they've made the administrative contact, the parents will be contacted, but do we really need to make them jump through that hoop? It is a small form, but it's just, it's another.
It's another.
It's another step that doesn't seem like it's necessary.
I think this should be a form just for administrators to fill out if they, yeah.
Yeah, as a way of documenting that this happened.
Right.
But it's not necessary that you have to, you have to sign it necessarily.
Isn't there a way in Skyward just to document, cause I see it on a lot of kids, documentation?
Could be, that's what we do.
So, and I just see narratives written, just documentation, so couldn't you go into Skyward and say, Dayton Town Officer Hudson, arrested, and that's, and now it's in Skyward, so that's tracked.
That'd be easier than paper, for sure.
Yeah.
Keep it in Skyward.
I think if they want the documentation, they gotta put it on the school, not on them.
Well, I could see, even if they did the paper forms, we have a signature, if they're looking at that legal signature piece of things and a badge number, like, that could get scanned in, so we'd also keep the papers. Um, I guess my bigger question is, do we really feel like the interview form is necessary? Like, the arrest form, I don't have as big of a matchup with, that's not gonna happen very often, that would make sense, that you might want documentation on arrest. But the interview form, unless it's an outside agency, I do think, even when it's shoplifting, ninety percent of the time, Greg is on duty, and he comes over and it's an SRO working and not an outside agency, you know, or if, if you get notified that something happened in one of the parking lots at one of the other businesses during lunchtime, ninety-five percent of the time, probably, you're the one that's gonna come over, um.
So, if you bring up that outside agency, okay, we'd have to interrupt policy about checking credentials, right?
Mm-hmm.
Grab his credentials, you fill out the form, and you're gonna sign this, we're checking.
Yeah. Like, I just, okay, yeah, that's the place where it's not gonna come in, not that.
I just don't think it's anything that you guys should have to, to deal with.
Yeah.
It's, if we are putting, we're either putting this child in your hands because of the situation, or you need to.
I see the intent.
We've checked your credentials. I just don't think that's something that.
Documentation under the student's name.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I see the intent, um, but I think that there's a way at Skyward to tap in those few notes.
Say, interview, interview held by such as a ban.
In the interview, in the interview process.
Or we.
And I'm kind of with Shannon.
Uh, and.
Just the arrest form.
Then, from there on, then it becomes their documentation.
I can see some officers, I always try to work with teachers and campus and everything, make things simple.
Right.
For everybody, but there could be an officer from another agency, that's not signing that thing, I don't have to.
Right.
Mm-hmm. Then you've automatically.
That is a bad taste.
That, it is a bad taste, and I see that, and I would think that you could even lose the signature, and we could just ask in a building for your badge number and write it down, and I would think that that would be sufficient enough.
Mm-hmm, I think if an officer comes into the school, never been here before, and they get upset about asking for a proper ID.
Mm-hmm, maybe.
Yeah, if you shouldn't be there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can't imagine anybody that's there to do any of those things that this is intended for would balk at it, it, well, you know, okay, you're coming in from an out, you know, you don't work for our school regularly, we just wanna have documentation of who's your, I might not remember your name tomorrow, cause, you know,
Yep, yeah.
In and out they go, I just wanna have a record of who we worked with, and so even in the future, if we need to reach out to somebody, we know who to reach out to for, you know, follow-up work, we had a great conversation, maybe they're gonna come in and be part of a team that does some sort of a panel with us, I mean, there's just ways and names of having that would be helpful.
Just put that these don't apply to SROs, yeah.
Right, no, this is specific to a third-party.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so we can make that correction. I removed probable cause, um, under the definitions, for the mere fact that the policy never once identifies probable cause at all.
It's never stated in there.
It's not stated in the policy, so why complicate?
It's a law enforcement thing, anyways, so.
Well, we don't have to tell you what it is, or we're not gonna reference it.
But, yeah, I was wondering, did we reference it at all anywhere else in the policy, and we did not, so it's just there, so we'll just take it off. I'm still kind of bothered, okay, so. Cause this is from ISBA, this blue language, do, and I know we've kind of been talking all around about it, what is the consensus with that paragraph?
Well, there's two ways to read without making a valid arrest, okay, is that a saying that it's an illegal arrest? And somebody's identifying that amongst the administrators or staff? Or is it just saying, are we trying to, law enforcement is removing a child from a campus without an actual arrest, without consent? Um, I'm trying to think of this, an incident or a scenario where that would happen. So, are they saying, without making a valid arrest, meaning illegal arrest, or without making a full arrest? A valid lawful arrest, is not, that's illegal, but is there any scenario where we remove a child for some reason without getting consent and not in arrest? I know the PC hold too, but I'm trying to define that without making a valid arrest. What's the intent to that? We don't know.
No, lawyers are up this.
My question to this is, before removing the student, they'll sign a release, is that what we're assuming this is, that we just said, no signature?
No, I think we all agree that we don't have a problem with the signature for the arrest, like, this one's okay. Don't you think, you?
Yeah, what if somebody doesn't want to sign it, I kinda like that too.
Nope.
Well, we're certain.
Arrest is in my custody, that's all you need to know, I'm out here.
Yeah. Can't stop them. That'll be in my report.
That was my answer.
Yeah, I guess, I guess what happened to me, I just write on the signature line, refused to sign. And I go, and put their badge number, okay, perfect, I just need your badge number.
Right.
And I get right in there, if they refuse to sign, I don't think that's gonna happen very often.
So, I consider the signatures.
Well, and I can't imagine any administrator running after a police officer.
Need your signature?
I need your signature.
Right, nor, and I don't think that would happen either, but.
I don't think, I wouldn't refuse to sign it, but it's just.
You could be disgruntled.
But you're gonna have to just give your badge number, and you're gonna have to slow down, I'm gonna have to take, tell me what your badge number is, so while you're giving, it's probably just as fast for you to write your own badge number down as it is for you to tell it to me and me write it down, you know, so, here, could you put your badge number and your signature here, all right?
Might be an issue with the copies to parent mailing.
Oh.
A parent could potentially be somewhat also involved with, you can see, you know, I don't know, just thinking of a scenario, seventeen-year-old student, you know, the father.
So, do what?
Something to the.
Right, right.
And now this is.
That's where I'm at.
I know, I figured that was like, I didn't hear it.
Investigation and tactics.
I was here longer than I was planning, but.
Make sure everybody's talked to at the right time.
Yeah.
Right.
Just wondering if you're sure about the signature before it's in that.
Right, well. This is specific for third parties, and that's what we're specifically talking about, is the third party.
You could change signs, who shall complete a release form.
But they're not completing it, administration is. We kind of went through that.
Right, um, well, I was just saying, you could say that if they, a release form shall be completed.
Okay.
And that way, it could be completed before they got there, but you have a completed release form with their badge number on it, and then you have to write a signature, and they're not having to do it.
I'd get rid of the police, shall sign.
Yeah.
I wish it could just be assumed.
Right.
You're now in my custody, it's assumed that.
You're arresting, and you have the, you have this on. If there's any legal, CYA, by a law, seriously, if crucial, it's in the U.S.
Or maybe just.
I'm not gonna question, that's a job.
School administrators should document who the arresting officer is, and when they were taken into custody?
Yeah.
Okay, how about that?
What's that?
Yeah, so, uh, I could read, uh, school administration should document who the arresting officer is and when the child was taken into custody. So, you guys can cover, like.
Yeah.
You can run, but you don't have to make us sign it.
Documenting, what did you say, documenting?
The arresting officer and the, when they were taken into custody.
Who the student was, who the officer was.
It would have to be signed, it'd just be a thing that's put directly into the system, our system.
And when they were taken into custody.
Okay, so we can tweak the form, uh, to accommodate that specificity, and then, um, still, I'm just gonna highlight this paragraph, and we can have a conversation about it. Cause I think other than that, that's, that's just the final dealio on this policy.
So, one thing, just going back to remind myself, look into more, um, no, if these officer can't come in and interview without a warrant, without a subpoena and stuff, so, I just wanna, I'm not absolutely positive.
Okay.
Every scenario.
Right.
Uh, but that's something we should, we research, and that'll be online.
Okay, I will do some research on that.
Yeah, that's one thing. Don't wanna mess up.
Okay, well, based on that, we've run six minutes over, I apologize, but we'll go ahead and conclude, conclude policy committee, and thank you all so much for coming.
And you'll finish cleaning up, official to administrator, thank you.